Send it in and it tells you how to get it. Sue is going to coordinate it with the printers again. She's done that several times. And we're having to use a new printer this year at PostNet. But if you want to pass these around, people can see what we're talking about.
That's in the hole.
We need to get the ads in by the seventh of March to be sure we get them into the program and get them arranged. They need to be sent in ready to Sue, uh, what phonics?
Uh, when did you say?
Seventh of March. And if you'd like to just buy a quarter page or whatever and say, congratulations, Patrick Ed Denise, uh, that would be great. Kent Leonhardt has already taken a full page. Marie Lewis has taken one for one of her businesses for a half page. And Fitz Alphazar has taken one for her Willa Bend bed breakfast.
Great.
So we have a good start. We'll be sending a letter to all the elected officials asking them if they would like to congratulate Morrissey on it. And the seating for the event will be limited to 160 people. And I've already had a request, somebody saw it on, uh, thank you, Tom, somebody saw the dinner on Facebook or on our website. He called for Alpitz last night, wanted two tickets for it. Hopefully we'll do well and sell it out. And the cost this year is forty dollars a person, four hundred dollars for, uh, forty dollars, that's our charge for the dinner. We're charging fifty dollars for it this night. We, uh, we did not make anybody else at Christmas dinner, but we knew we were going to do it too. And we did that as a goodwill and fellowship thing. But I'd like to ask you one thing, how does everybody feel about meeting here?
I think it's great.
It's good. I, I like it because it gives you a chance to sit around and have some fellowship and get to know each other better before we start. So that, that takes care of it. Morrissey is committed to it and it's going to be Saint Patrick's Day dinner honoring Saint Patrick Morrissey. Barbara has done a beautiful thing that we're going to be putting on our, uh, our letters or our emails weekly for the next month. And then after February, a save the date card will go out with that. And if you haven't, if, if you didn't see our, our tickets for the Christmas dinner, I think their, Barbara has collaborated with Grace, is it Grace?
Yes, Grace Postnet.
And they, they're going to do our tickets, uh,
Like that.
For, uh, like, uh, for Saint Patrick's. Hopefully we'll have a lot of green ribbon and green hats up there.
You better hit the Dollar Tree pretty quick. I said, you better get to the Dollar Tree. They've got their Saint Patrick stuff out already.
Do you think that the Dutch house is going to be accommodating enough people that, I mean, I, I can't help but think that more people will come with another facility.
We talked about that and, and, you know, the, the, uh, the big one where the executive committee had theirs, that place is not ADA compliant. I'm reluctant to have one there.
Where was that?
They can get insurance for it.
Oh, I, I know, okay.
We've had them down at the, uh, we've had a big dinner down at, uh,
Fair.
The Underwood building at the State Fairground. But to do that, uh, they set it up for you. If you want to decorate it, you've got to decorate it. You got to be there at noon the next day to take it all down.
Okay.
So, but that's how, oh, you also have to contract your own, uh, caterer for that.
Okay, yeah, I know.
The Dutch house has always done well for us and, uh, we, we decided to have it there meetings ago. You're, you're right, we've, we've thought we could probably sell more tickets, but, uh, there's only so, so many of us and we're all of a certain age and we're not able to do that much setting up and taking down.
Light of stems.
I have suggestions. Oh, why don't we do one page and have like members like Maggiore, Kyle, Channel Off to have to print that page on that in the program? What do you think about that?
We tried that one time and we had five takers for five dollars. We can do that if you want to, or, you know, if you want to have a quarter page or if you save for ten bucks, just have your name listed on one page, uh, congratulations. We can do that.
I'm sure with this crowd, we can raise probably two fifteen or twenty dollars.
Put me down for one of those tens.
Okay.
In small font.
It's not Patrick Morrissey's celebration, but it is his honoring of the event, uh, Saint Patrick's Day, so.
We do have.
What you'd like to do.
Okay, we do have a few more names that have been assigned to make a sale in the program. Ray, if you have that list.
Uh, no, I think this came from our, our executive meeting. Uh, we had Fay with Mama Fay's, Allison Insurance, Park Center and PostNet. Um, I was going to take Galucci's Bakery, which apparently is now moved to Lewisburg. I had never heard of it.
No, but it's in, it's in, uh, it's in Alderson.
It's in Alderson? I'll have to find it. Um, and Wagon Wheel Restaurant. Unfortunately, a lot of the other businesses are on the other side of the river, so they're not in Greenbrier, I guess, but, um, I'll try to pick up some others. Uh, then we had Brent's with Dinsmore Shoals on Brian. Uh, Mary Hamilton was assigned, uh, Roberts Antiques and Wines.
Yes.
Uh, Barbara, uh, Hock Knob and Eepock Lumber. Uh, and then Ally who's going to do Dutch Miller, uh, the Whipple Shop, JTM Enterprises and the Polling, so.
So if you have any connection to any business around, please take a couple of these and, uh, and secure ads from them. It's usually not that you talk.
Yeah, they have a visit and, um, they're generally familiar with the operation where they know what's, what they can afford and what they will put in an ad.
You can look in the books, uh, we're passing around under the old programs and see if you are acquainted with any of the owners or whatever and, and would like to take one to, to sell some ads for us. Because, uh, that is really where you make your money on, on these dinners, is on the ads.
Okay, that's that. Next item, I think I did not put one in, but it's a treasurer's report and Ally wants to make that by telephone. Get hold of that. Hello, Ally. Uh, I'm trying to turn up the sound on this one. Speaker, well, that'll help.
Brent, Brent, can I call, can I call you like right then on my other phone? Cause this battery's about to die.
Okay. Well, we'll be back later. Don't move, that's dial. Path forward for the club. Uh, we need to work on a schedule of events for the districts. We'd like to have one in each district. And here we go. We have you on board.
Speaker.
Speaker again.
Teenager.
We have.
Are we ready for me?
We are.
Okay. Let me get my old people glasses on.
Thank you, Paul.
Watch it, Ally.
Okay now, I, I'm blown away you can't do anything to me.
Well, we'll wait till you come to town next Saturday.
Okay, so basically on hand right now, we have four thousand, four hundred, forty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. We do have a few checks that have come in that have not been deposited, but we'll talk about those at the February meeting. On December thirty-first, we received thirty-three cents in interest.
Wow.
Um, yeah. So let's talk about dinner. So the cost for the dinner was four thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. To break that down, the programs were six hundred, fifty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. The actual cost for the food and the venue was three thousand, four hundred, eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. We bought Mr. McFusky a gift for the amount of fifty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. A total of eighty-four tickets were sold. Some other tickets were sold but never picked up or paid for. Uh, so that brought our ticket sales to three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. So technically, I hate to report this, but in this dinner, we took a loss of eight hundred, thirty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. We've had three memberships dues that were paid in the amount of sixty dollars. And that is all I have.
Any questions?
Any questions or concerns or?
Would you ask Ally to bring all her records so we can do an audit? Uh, I and Ron Kirk and Bob Walkup are on the audit committee. We, it has to be done, what, by the first of March?
I think it was born of that February meeting.
Okay, so we need to get started.
Okay, uh, we have, we've been, um, hustling, myself and Mr. McKinney have been hustling for ad sales and ticket sales. So we will report all that when we create an event in February. So anything that I receive from now until the February meeting, I will report in February and so forth after that.
Okay.
We have sold one, a full-page ad so far. Um, and then I think there's been a couple little half-page ads. But that's about it as of now. Let's talk about what we're doing, okay? Hope everything's good that way.
Oh, we, uh, we have an audit committee that is ready to work with you on the audit that will be due, uh, at the end of February. And the audit committee is, who's the chair of the audit committee? Ron Kirk and Bob Walkup and Barbara Tuckwell.
And I'm already ready for that if they want me to go ahead and start submitting my stuff and bring my stuff in.
Yes, that would be good. Where to, Barbara? Or Ron?
Uh, she can, she can bring it to my house.
Okay.
And how far back, give me the date range, how far back am I going? Because is it my understanding that, uh, when Mr. Campbell was treasurer, that the audit wasn't complete?
No, it was done, uh, uh, it would be, uh, from, from the time you took over. Actually, it'll be two years instead of one year.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I'll go ahead and bring that stuff in because I'm ready for that. Um, I have the main statements and all my receipts and pictures of everything, so I could do that. I'll go ahead and print out all the campaign finance reports, just to help them a little bit.
So is this, is this two fiscal, uh, fiscal years?
Yes. Yes.
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
Yes.
Correct.
When will we be able to start that, Ally?
What is it?
When will you be able to deliver materials to committee?
Uh, let's see, okay, so this weekend I'm coming in to deal with my daughter and deal with some other things that I have to clear up with Mr. Dutch's office. Um, and then the following weekend I will not be in, so two weeks.
If she's coming this weekend, why not?
I have to take my daughter to the wardrobe and stuff this coming weekend.
Is that in Charleston or here?
It's in Lewisburg.
Okay. Uh, would we be able to pick that up from you at a given location?
Sure, I mean, if you guys want to.
Okay.
We're right off, we're three way.
Right off, okay. Ron is, is right off sixty-four.
Can I give you my address and you just bring it to our house whenever you're here?
I can, if you, if you just want to email it to me or whatever.
She has our address.
Just go ahead and, and, uh, put it out there, Ron.
It's in the membership list.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I, well, you, I think I have your address on the members list.
Yeah, five eight six Underwood Road, so.
Yeah, I think I have that on the members list, so I can just, I can drop it off on Sunday.
Okay.
Is that what?
Wonderful.
Sunday at what time?
I can honestly give you a specific time, it will be between twelve and three.
Okay, little bit after twelve is okay.
They'll be there.
They'll be there. Waiting and, uh,
Okay.
If your daughter will be okay.
Uh, yeah, she's, um, she has a, a few fractures in the top of her foot and some ligaments that are messed up from the pole falling on her, so it's a patch.
Okay, any other questions? None being expressed, we thank you, Ally.
All right, thank you guys, be safe.
Good one.
Bye-bye.
On, on the expenses for the dinner, uh, she gave you the expenses of the program, but that was actually the program and the save the date and the tickets. Those are all, um, one, one bill from PostNet. And one of the reasons we, uh, lost a little more, we figured we were going to lose a hundred to two hundred dollars on it, was they had quoted us a, uh, a price for the dinners of thirty-one dollars. But then, when they gave us the bill, it was thirty-five dollars. Because they had looked at the year before and gave us the price for them, but their prices had been increased. So it was three hundred and sixty dollars and I don't think it was worth arguing with them for. They, they do a good job with this, with the dinners for us, so. We got a solid price of forty dollars for this year.
Per plate.
Yes. And you get a good solid glass of wine for six bucks, too.
But the ticket price is fifty dollars.
Ticket price is fifty dollars, yeah.
The ticket price is.
They can pay for the general and your tickets on the sales.
Good, okay. We want to have an emphasis for younger members. We're turning into a geritocracy here. And, uh, we want to have people who can replace us in a few years and have a good idea of what it means to be a conservative. So that you can communicate that to others. That's very important, I think. If we can get someone or some others from the Western District, we have no one at this point. So we don't have a vice president for the Western District and we would like to have one. I have a feeling that, uh, some of the members that were recruited by the, um, executive committee were from the Western End. So right now, uh, they've cleaned us out and we need to reboot on that. So if, if anyone knows a, uh, a member who is interested in our Republic, who lives in the Western End, we would love to hear, uh, from them and we would solicit your initiative to contact us.
Well, we, we've not, uh, we haven't been doing very well with getting our commissioners to participate in things. None of them bought tickets for our Christmas dinner.
Well, I don't know, I've seen her several events.
You know how to put a little more pressure on them than I do.
I just had to think of her. She came to Warner Bear Events, didn't she?
She was at the last Extravaganza for the Executive Committee. Okay. Inquiry on the booth for the State Fair. Uh, we've had, I think, a booth at the State Fair for a very long time. And I think that, uh, has been discussed. You talked with Kelly, what's her last name?
Kelly Collins.
Collins.
She's the director. And Kelly told me at their members' dinner during the fair week that there, uh, we complained about the fact that the larger quilt in it hung right over our booth and the tag dangling down for it blocked the view in our booth for two years in a row. And she said that, uh, there'd been some talk among the, uh, members of the, their board that maybe they want to eliminate political, uh, presences at the State Fair. And that feeling is people should come and enjoy the fair and not worry about politics for that week. But they, she says, would be the first people to know it, but they sent you the, uh, renewal form in the middle of March. So they're going to have to get it in here to tell us whether or not, uh, they're going to allow us or not.
And in that vein, I've talked with one of the other governors.
Yes.
I forget what his name was.
Charles, isn't it?
Ralph, uh, yes, Ralph Warren. And, uh, he said he has not heard any talk about that one way or the other, but that he will keep his ears open and find out maybe if that is the sentiment that's going to, uh, come up with some opposition to the political zoos this next year. Yes.
One of the complaints of some of the people working at the Democrat booth was that they felt threatened being there. There's some people that made out loud remarks. There have been no complaints about our booth or about the other booth. The complaint that we ever had was the year we handed out stickers that said Vote Republican and they found, they spent weeks straight putting it up off the concrete at the fairground.
That's not good.
That's why you can't hand out stickers of any kind of that.
And the Democrats were threatened when they're right next door to the Sheriff's Department?
Yeah.
They said they felt threatened.
Yeah. And they also had this sign on the side of their booth that said, "No Hate in My Heart."
Hold a man up.
We did, I, I, I have seen several people that stopped in our booth at different times and said, "Well, I just told those Democrats off of this."
You weren't the only ones.
I think the only complaints were by the Democrats who were manning the booth. And the problem is, if you have a booth there, you are required to man it from nine in the morning until nine at night. And we've let people get, uh, leave at eight o'clock at night because once the state show starts, there's no traffic through there. But there were days when the Democrats had absolutely nobody in their booth all day long. The only picture they had up there was Joe Manch. Well, they had, they did have, they did have a, a cardboard cutout of, uh, of Joe Manch.
Joe had Kamala. And, and I was there at the booth, I would ask them, had they said anything? And they never reported that Joe had said anything. I like to have good relations with our competition.
Um, I don't know if any of you know Beth Southern or not, she's with Department of Culture. She was president of the Department of Culture. And she told me that when they had the meeting with the fair, they did discuss the booth, uh, the, the, the local booth, but she didn't say whether they were going to remove it. She said that wasn't a topic of discussion.
The last meeting they had, and when was that?
Monday, and I was at the inauguration.
Maybe Kelly will know something about Kamala. I've got something here I'd like to pass around, you may be interested in seeing. Uh, this was sent to me by, uh, sure, I never can remember her name, Joan, Joan Kessler, out of Williamburg. Joan likes to come to our meetings and dinners and stuff, but she cannot drive at night. But, uh, she sent me this, uh, she's been cleaning out a house out there and I believe that she found this. And it's from, uh, March twenty-five, nineteen eighty-six. Uh, it's a full-page article here about a hundred and ninety-two gathered for the Lincoln Day Dinner in Lewisburg. You might want to pass that around, let people have a look at it. Very interesting. Uh, Don Racy had that, uh, was running for, uh, for Chairman of the Party. And Racy ran for Chairman of the Party and then he ran for Governor and after two years he quit because until Conrad Lucas took over, only two guys had ever served a full four-year term. That was David McKinney and Doug McKinney. Everybody else gave it up after two years. That's an interesting article where Joan, uh, Joan sent it to me, it just came in the mail yesterday. If, 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 if we get word from Kelly, I'll, I'll have Fay put it out in our, uh, news, news so other day.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, Fay, you had mentioned the possibility of doing a booth at the Capitol.
Yes.
And if we're still interested in that, I can look in over the weekend, uh, to my contacts and ask what day that would be and how to sign up and if there are any costs and.
Well, there wasn't any cost, I'll take it, it's out in the lobby.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, yeah, they wrote down, and they didn't charge us. And as I mentioned to Brent's, well, he may want to discuss, uh, want to mention to you about the other counties?
Oh, yes. Um, Fay had mentioned that, uh, that we want to do a table just for Greenbrier County or might we want to, uh, be joined, uh, by, uh, members from adjoining counties? I'm open to that either way. Do you have any thoughts?
What are you talking about? I don't understand.
Have me, go ahead.
It'd be like an information booth at the Capitol during the legislative session. They have app at these some days.
During the legislative session, okay.
You would talk about either signing up individually or joining with other counties to pass out flyers and stuff, yeah. But I'll, I'll reach out over the weekend and ask what I'll have.
I think it's a good idea, what you think?
I like the idea of having other people, uh, come join us, but I'm not doctrinaire about it. We, you gave me the name of Jack David Woodrum to call. So, uh, we'll see if he or someone that he knows is interested in that. They'd done that last year, did they not?
No, it wasn't last year, it was a couple of some years ago. Um, who is in, um, Fayette County, uh, who's, who are you contacting, do you know there?
I don't know. Only thing you can find on the WBGOB website is the, uh, email address of the chairman.
I watch it, okay.
We'll have to do a little more digging to sign and find out if that is feasible or if someone wants to participate.
Well, the State Executive Committee meets on the February the eighth. I don't, you know if they've ever done that, Sue? I, I don't think they have.
I just know we did it one time when I was in the executive committee and it was very, I thought it was very productive.
So do you go, you're not there every day?
No, we were just there one day.
One day, okay.
One day.
Public and women, West Virginia do that one day, too. There, there's several groups every day that went to, went to a session at the booth.
It's a good experience. It's a good experience.
Get an idea of who's doing what up there. Okay. There's interest in establishing a student scholarship that needs to be incorporated legally to be a 501(c)(3) corporation. And we have some people who are agreeable to be part of the governing board. There are a couple of people who want to donate, but they do not want to be part of the governance process for the board. So we have Trey Holland, Allie McLeod, and Bogian Williams, who have agreed to sit as board members. I have contacted some lawyers, the possibility of having that legal work done. John Bryant, his office says, no, they don't do that kind of work. And neither does David Moore, reaching out to Tom White, who has left Dan Ford Shoals. He's with another firm. But he is an excellent lawyer. Does a good job. I've been up against him one time, and I was impressed with his work. Okay. And I think, any other questions on that?
Is that, is that an expensive position to create a corporation?
It depends on how much they want to charge for that. It's not really very complicated to do. I have done those in the past, but I no longer have an active license. And I don't want to pay to get one in order to do that. Because number one, you don't have to go to any more CLE sessions. You don't have to pay my practice insurance. And I'm sure there are other benefits.
Steve Hart, who is going to be the major benefactor for it, was kind of under the impression that we might find some Republican lawyer who'd be willing to do that on a pro bono basis. But we met and talked about it. And we thought that if we could get it down for a nominal fee, we could have the club go ahead and pay to do it. And then Larry Ickey said that if we have the corporation, he can do the workforce for making a mild profit. That part for yourself.
Okay, and Allie has suggested the name of another lawyer. Well, another accountant who can help with that, who is a partner with Larry Lucas. Now, information, if you haven't heard already, there have been a spate of medals issued by President Biden. And, you know, the contributors to a wonderful republic we have, starting off, getting medals, Liz Cheney and the January 6th committee. Hillary Clinton, I see.
It's okay if we hold our applause.
For your brunt, George Forrest.
Yes.
A fine advocate for our freedom in our republic. It's enough.
Lionel Messi turned him down.
What?
Lionel Messi, the world's greatest soccer player, turned him down.
Well, who would want to be in that company? Anybody else have any business they want to bring forward?
Bring something?
Yes, sir.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Robert Johnston and the former Vice Chairman of the Summers County Republican Executive Committee. But I'm not here on behalf of the committee, or for that matter, the Republicans. But I am on a campaign with a number of collaborators, including Paul McClellan, to stop chemtrails in West Virginia. And I have been in touch with our elected representatives. And I, do all of you understand what a chemtrail is?
Tell us about chemtrails.
All right, well, chemtrails are these linear clouds that can see streaking our sky. All right? Distinct from a contrail, which is the vapor trail of a jet aircraft, which appears for a brief period after the plane disappears. The chemtrails have been shown to be composed of probably industrial waste, but it's high in aluminum, barium, and strontium. And it's also been shown to contain the mRNA that was in the injections. It is now particles that linger in the atmosphere. The aluminum causes numerous human ailments. And it also impairs the oxygen takeup of trees and plants. This is a poison intended to poison us and our environment. They've been doing this for decades. And they attribute it to their experimental program in climate control. Okay, it is part of their climate control. But it is, that's not the only intention or the only complement of this discharge. The consequence is that we are all suffering, and we just don't know that. For example, I went to a physician who has done a lot of study of the blood of people who have been injected with the mRNA injection and other un-injected people, including myself. And she observed the same things in my blood as in an injected person's blood. When I have not been injected, none of my family's been injected, none of my neighbors have been injected. And I don't go to big group meetings. This is probably as big as it gets. And I'm not intimate with anybody else. So the point is, they are poisoning us, and we are not aware of that. And it should be ended. The state of Tennessee passed a bill to prohibit this. The state of Florida is working on a bill. I'm not sure what its status is right now to do the same thing. I have been urging our elected people, and I have spoken with Ray Canberry. I have spoken with Roy Cooper. I've spoken with Vince Deeds. I've spoken with Jack David. And I've spoken with J.B. McCluskey about this. And I would urge you all to support our effort by also communicating with these people. Now, if you would like to get more information and you have a pencil and a piece of paper, write down geoengineeringwatch.com. Oh, I'm sorry, it's a dot org. The principal is Dean Wiggington, and he is passionate about ending this. One of the things that brought it to his attention was the fact that he was living off the grid in Redding, California. And he noticed a reduction in his solar power. And so we started looking into it. And what this, this is supposed to do for those people who think that climate change or global warming is a thing. They're saying that what this does is reduce the sun getting to the earth in America. It does. And the point being, the plants need the sun to take up carbon dioxide and make plant material. We need the sun to make vitamin D as well as solar power. So it's toxic in that way as well. So geoengineeringwatch.org is the place to go. It does a periodic, I'm not sure, daily podcast. But if you watch one podcast, you'll get your blood up and you'll understand what I'm talking about. So I encourage you to do that and communicate with our people. Another thing that's on my mind is the poor folks who have suffered from their climate engineering in western North Carolina. I used to live in western North Carolina. And these folks are living in tents in this severe weather. So I have, I just decided earlier this week to take up a collection and take a truckload of propane cylinders down for these folks because they're depending on mobile fuel supplies since the roads are washed out and you can't get back and forth. So they're living in tents for our games. They need fuel. If any of you would like to make a contribution toward that effort, I would be very grateful.
Might mention that meeting on the 23rd about the chemtrails.
So we're going to have a meeting on the 23rd to get a group together to help with this effort.
Which effort?
Is that the North Carolina effort or?
No, the chemtrails.
The chemtrails. Okay.
It's at the Dutch House at Newm.
Dutch House at Newm on the 23rd. To address the chemtrail issue. What would be interested in is people who are willing to be actively participating in that.
I just want the legislators to take it seriously.
I'm sorry?
How do you get the legislators, what does it take to get them to get serious about this? Like, how do you get them to take it seriously?
Well, I think numbers can, okay? I mean, I've talked to them, but, you know, and they seem to have an interest to the extent that they understand the problem. But, and Jack David did pretty much say he would be willing to put something forth. I sent them all a copy of the Tennessee bill. But, but the more people contact them, the more, more they will feel a need to do something. And they need to do it this session.
And we also, I would expect that they will be interested in any scientific medical support that shows that this is really happening.
Exactly. Now, I brought with me a booklet, which I think is in Trey's hands. And that booklet is available at geoengineeringwatch.org. And all of our elected people have received a copy of that booklet. And it has references and material, and the website has all kinds of references if you want to look into it further.
Well, thank you, Joe.
Any questions?
Is there any thought about who's behind it? That is, is it the World Economic Forum?
Well, one can reasonably surmise it's the World Economic Forum. It's being carried out by our Department of Defense. And they're, you know, again, they're using the guise of climate control. But that's not really what it's all about. So it's part of the UN Agenda 2030, if you know what that is.
Are you saying our, our Department of Defense is working this thing?
To poison us, yes.
They don't even know how to run the army. Now they're trying to run other things.
They can't balance the budget either.
I agree with you.
Do they have special aircraft that drop this stuff or is it?
Well, it takes, there takes bladders in the aircraft full of the liquid that they inject into the overflow air in jet engines.
For commercial flights or?
Commercial flight. It is on some of the commercial flights as well. In fact, there was a report of one commercial pilot who refused to push the button. So, but it's largely tankers.
Do you think it, because of the fact that the Defense Department is involved in it, the fact that Lewisburg, our airport, we have, you know, the National Guard coming in very frequently and in tankers. C-130s, I see so many of them every week.
They're up overhead. We know that. Now, I don't know where they're flying out of for spreading our area, you know?
They'll, they'll have a guard unit out of Charleston also.
Wouldn't we see a trail though from those planes?
We see them every day.
Wouldn't we see a trail, a chemtrail? Or is this invisible?
I don't understand the question. No, we see them all the time.
Okay.
If you look up.
I'm saying if, if we, the planes.
They don't spray until they're up in the stratosphere.
Stratosphere, okay.
So you're not going to see them taking off from here spraying stuff, okay? They get up to altitude and let them spray. Any other questions?
You don't have very much more in the air. Can you still see it? Because you can see it, the stream behind the planes about 24 hours before it's going to rain.
Exactly.
Is that what you're referring to?
That's correct.
But you don't see it every day necessarily?
Well, it isn't every day, but they do a lot of it at night. Okay, for example, I had chickens up until recently. And, and I would go out at dusk to close up the chicken coop. And you look up at dusk, and here they come. So you may be missing it because you're sleeping or because you're inside. But during the day, they do it as well. But it's not every day. You're quite correct. I was exaggerating a bit, but they do it very often. And, and you can often see like a tic-tac-toe board up there of these patterns, which are not related to commercial air traffic.
They're mostly visible at sunset, which is where you see these streaks across the sky because the sun's reflecting against them, which makes them mostly visible.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, folks. I appreciate your attention.
If there's no other business to come forward, go ahead.
I've got some copies of the Judicial Watch COVID Project. This is the single best thing that's been put forward by anybody about what really happened with the COVID project. I've got several copies of it from Judicial Watch. If you'd like to have one to read, just pick it up here and take it with you and enjoy it and get angry and get your blood pressure. You'll feel better.
Well, Mr. Maestro, you will lead us in the, Dylan, bless him now. Are you ready?